Jason Kyle.
Here.
Dennis Miller.
Here.
Angela Woodward.
Here.
Dan Lawson.
Here.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, good evening and welcome again, everyone, to the December 3 meeting of the Ashland City Council. To our viewers at home, thank you for joining us. Members of our audience, members of council, Mayor Miller, Attorney Bush, Dr. Paxton, welcome all. First item on the agenda this evening will be the approval of the minutes from the November 19 meeting. If there are no additions, deletions, or corrections to the minutes, I'll ask for a motion to approve as submitted.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
Lawson.
Aye.
Workman.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Woodward.
Aye.
Minutes will stand approved. First ordinance this evening will be an ordinance authorizing the Director of Finance to transfer funds within the annual appropriations and declaring an emergency.
Move for non-reading in full. Second.
Thank you.
Lawson.
Aye.
Workman.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Woodward.
Aye.
Good evening. The ordinance that you have before you is somewhat of a house cleaning or keeping item. There are different lines within the 2024 appropriations that need some adjustments. And we are requesting that you make those adjustments by transferring from within a fund from one line item to another. This is money that you've already appropriated in 2024. And it is just moving monies to other lines to meet anticipated or needs as we work through this.
Questions for Mr. Paxton? Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve on the first reading?
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you.
Workman.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Woodward.
Aye.
Lawson.
Aye.
I'll move to suspend the rules for three separate readings, three separate days.
Second.
Thank you.
Kyle.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Woodward.
Aye.
Lawson.
Aye.
Workman.
Aye.
Motion to approve the ordinance?
So moved. Second.
Thank you.
Miller.
Aye.
Woodward.
Aye.
Lawson.
Aye.
Workman.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
Ordinance 78 dash 24.
Next, we have an ordinance authorizing the Director of Finance to amend appropriations for the calendar year 2024 and declaring an emergency.
Move for non-reading in full. Second.
Thank you.
Workman.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Woodward.
Aye.
Lawson.
Aye.
This is a little different in the fact that we are, I'm asking you to appropriate additional funds that these different funds have received in an effort to allow this additional monies to be used for expenditures such as the park. There's a couple pension funds in there where it received additional property taxes. There's some miscellaneous income and some other revenues lines that have received more than what we anticipated. And all we're doing is appropriating that so that that money can be used to cover the expenses on the right side of that exhibit.
It's a good thing.
Yes.
All right. With that then, is there a motion to approve on the first reading?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
Kyle.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Woodward.
Aye.
Lawson.
Aye.
Workman.
Aye.
Again, we'll suspend the rules, move to suspend the rules for three separate readings, three separate days.
Second.
Thank you.
Miller.
Aye.
Woodward.
Aye.
Lawson.
Aye.
Workman.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
Motion to approve the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Woodward.
Aye.
Lawson.
Aye.
Workman.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Ordinance 79 dash 24.
And we have an ordinance authorizing and directing the Mayor, Director of Public Service to enter into a contract for professional services for the U.S. 42 corridor sanitary sewer extension projects in and adjacent to the city of Ashland, Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
Move for non-reading in full.
Second.
Thank you.
Kyle.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Woodward.
Aye.
Lawson.
Aye.
Workman.
Aye.
I think that we have discussed this in the past. It's been a little while ago. But as we look to the future and inventory our existing sanitary sewer system, we're trying to figure out the best place to put our dollars as we plan to grow. And this particular project is out along 42 and Mifflin Avenue area. In fact, the trunk line that's being discussed in this particular ordinance would actually begin at Fire Station Number Two, run along the right-of-way, ODOT's right-of-way, all along U.S. 42, around past East Main Street, 250, and I guess you could say end at another trunk line at Middle Rousberg Road. And what this would do is this will actually relieve the pressure from all of the system that's on the southwest side of our city, which is where much of our residential activity is. But that would be in the area of Cooper Drive and basically, if you think about Claremont Avenue, everything on the, what is it, the southwest side of Claremont Avenue, all those homes and residential neighborhoods, this takes the pressure off that system. And now the sanitary, the flow in that sanitary, part of our sanitary sewer system can now be shared and taken back to our sewer plant in a variety of routes, rather than relying on the existing lines that flow through the city. Maybe even more importantly, what this does is open us up for future residential growth along U.S. 42. And as we've talked before, we do know that there's a variety of properties out along Mifflin Avenue and U.S. 42 where we expect to see future growth. In fact, not only do we expect it, we know that some plans are underway. The initial surveys and so on that have to take place before a residential community can be built are happening in those very vicinity. So over the, I think in my last State of the City, you heard me talk about the fact that we were working with a property owner now along U.S. 42 that is looking to build up to maybe 400 units eventually. Those could be in the form of houses, those could be in form of townhouse apartments, just a variety of different living arrangements. But that is one project that could be served by this additional trunk line. And so the truth is, I've reported at the last couple, several council meetings, the interest from outside developers is just amazing. And the, we need to get our ducks in order so that as they start moving forward, we have the utility system in place to accommodate that future growth. So that is what we're suggesting that you approve tonight is hiring MS consultants. They've done work for us before to basically begin the survey of the land, design the trunk line, and prepare the big package and construction documents for this new trunk line. Now, this $425,000 price tag, I would guess that most of it will be, if it in fact comes in at 425,000, we can always be hopeful it comes in under that. But if it comes in, in the neighborhood of 425,000, that we would probably use the rest of our ARPA money to cover this cost. And this fits with everything that we've discussed up to this point, that we want to use that money for projects that have a long-term benefit, tangible long-term benefit for the future of our community. And we believe this would certainly fit those two criteria.
Questions, comments?
Do we foresee any need to add to or expand the water supply in that area?
That could be coming in the future as well. That could be coming because we are taking a look at all those water lines, but this seems to be the pressing issue. And this would help us with the situation that I believe I've described at past council meetings. I think we've had offline conversations, some of us, where we have sewer lines that might be, I'm making this up, so don't hold me to this, but maybe it is a 12-inch line flowing into an 8-inch line. Obviously, most of us can see where that could be a challenge as we continue to grow. And so this is what's going to help address some of that out along that 42 corridor.
And this will be adjacent to, but not on, this, the State Department's Ohio?
It will be on their right-of-way. We got permission from them to install it. And we didn't know if we'd be able to do that, but we talked to them here about a month ago. And they confirmed that yes, that would be no problem and to work with the local District 3 permitting section. And they would help us accomplish it. And I think a lot of that, some might say, change in attitude from ODOT is driven by the fact that statewide, the need for housing and more residential development is so top priority. And so with that in mind, I think they're willing to do whatever they can to help us make that happen here.
Brings me to my next speculation then.
Yes.
As I was driving that today, I was thinking, driving around 42 when I was thinking about this today. And it appears as though the right-of-way that ODOT has would perhaps in the future allow for additional lanes. If we have additional homes in that area and increasing volumes of traffic in that area, could it, they allow for additional lanes along 42 and turn lanes and things like that? And would that conflict with what we're doing here?
No, it would not conflict with it. And let me tell you, another thought. On two occasions in the last seven years since I've been in this role, we have applied for an ODOT grant to build a pedestrian pathway from Bany Road out on 42 all the way around in the right-of-way to U.S. 250 or East Main Street, Bob Evans. And both times, we were unsuccessful at achieving the grant. But it's interesting, as I called the Director and asked if we would be allowed to put this in their right-of-way, he said yes. And then he called me back in a little bit and he said, "Have you guys ever thought about putting a pedestrian pathway in that?" And I said, "We have. In fact, we have applied twice from ODOT to do that." And he said, "Well, let me, let me talk to some folks around here because that would be ideal, especially as that continues to, the number of people living in that side of town continues to increase. That would make sense that you had an alternative transportation method." So they probably, it sounds like they may not be thinking as much about expanding the highway as expanding the opportunities to take people off the highway and give them another way to get about the city.
With that many new homes, it would increase traffic flow.
Oh, absolutely.
Significantly, from there on out to Walmart and places like that.
Yes. And the other thing to keep in mind is, a lot of that, we once had a lot more traffic out there when we had the Walmart shopping complex and Food Town and J.C. Penney's and all of that traffic. And that all went away. So it's very possible that it could build back up to what we once knew several decades ago. So.
Very good. It sounds like there might be more state funding.
Exactly. Exactly.
This type of projects.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Yes. And you know, for those of you, and I know some of you do live in those neighborhoods out there, you can even see where they were constructed with the future in mind, where you actually see that the street ends, and it ends in a way that the thought was eventually it will continue and form another street. And so that's what you'll most likely see happen, I have a feeling, in the near future. Now, I will also say, there are other developments in that area, along 42, that, that have their own packaged sewer plants and their own systems, and they have struggled. And it is not out of the question that once this trunk line was installed, that some of those sections, some of those developments, and anyone watching who lives there, don't be frightened, but it is not out of the question to think that the EPA could eventually say they need to hook onto the city's system because they have had some challenges with their own systems and so on. And of course, if that happens, that is, they don't get to join for free. They would have to pay for our city water and sewer. But those are things that might be impacted by having this line in place.
Which would be a positive for all of us.
For the residents that live in those communities as well as the city. Yes.
Definitely.
So the, go ahead, Dennis, or Councilman. I was just going to say, and like I said earlier, we expect the contract to be under 425,000, but the ordinance actually says not to exceed 425,000. So.
Anyone else? Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve on the first reading?
So moved.
Second.
Second. Thank you.
Miller.
Aye.
Woodward.
Aye.
Lawson.
Aye.
Workman.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
Again, we'll move to suspend the rules for three separate readings, three separate days.
Second.
Thank you.
Woodward.
Aye.
Lawson.
Aye.
Workman.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Motion to approve the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
Lawson.
Aye.
Workman.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Woodward.
Aye.
Ordinance 80 dash 24.
And it is 7:19. We do have a public hearing item on the agenda. Move right to that. This is a proposed 2025 appropriations hearing for the city of Ashland, Ohio. And with that, I will hand it over to Mr. Paxton for summary. And then we'll open it up to the public. Larry?
This is a review of the, a public hearing concerning the 2025 spending appropriations for the city of Ashland. In my career, I've never done this, so I'm kind of on thin ice a little bit, a little nervous about it, I guess. But it is always done after the end of the year so that we can gather the year in numbers. As it falls this year, it might be the perfect time to do this because the first payroll of 2025 has to be completed on January the 3rd. So that really means that the last business day of 2024 will be the 30th of January. Now, we talked previously earlier about possibly having the last council meeting of the year that week before, which will call, come into play here in the fact that we would be able to have our second hearing at the next council meeting, tweak the appropriations, and possibly approve that at that meeting, which in my work is good because that means I start the year with numbers in my appropriation, as long as they are good. The budget, or budget, excuse me, the appropriations, there's much big difference between budgets and appropriations. Appropriations for 2025 includes all of the operating funds of the city. There are seven different types of funds that we utilize. There's about 64 different departments that operate within those funds. The current estimated revenue of that budget, or excuse me, I keep saying that and I apologize to you, it's an appropriations. The 24, excuse me, the 25 appropriations was, or is anticipated to be about $84,600,000. And with a expenditure of about $80,300,000 in the coming year. It continues to employ the 250 employees that we currently operate with and employ, as well as the different, 20 different departments that are in place today. Along with that, it continues the city services that we offer today as going forward. There will be no, we do not anticipate any changes in our, our work and our processes at this point. This budget is pretty straightforward. It is balanced as of this evening. But we have some things yet to complete in 2024 before we get to that. Okay? It is a working document, and I want that to be very much known that this will continue to be tweaked between now and our next hearing and before we get to a final version because these cash balances are critical to the operating funds as they carry forward into 2025. For example, if we had only a million and a half dollars in the general fund at the end of '24, that would drastically impact what the general fund does in 2025. So those cash carryovers are important to us. And with this perfect alignment of things, I think that we will be in a much better position to be able to project an even better appropriations than what we have this evening as we move forward. There are some things that we are watching, obviously. The cash carryovers, I've mentioned. The income tax fund has been kind of neutral as far as 2024. It goes ahead a little, a bit above our projections, and then it falls a little behind, only slightly. This week has it started to move ahead of our projections of $19,800,000. So we are watching that as we move forward because that will help us also in the coming year. Another item that we are watching as well is there is, the state legislature has before it a bill that is receiving hearings that would impact our safety force's pension costs. The current funding mechanism is 19 and a half percent of those wages. And the, the anticipated bill would raise that to 24%. It doesn't sound like a whole lot of percentage, except when you start applying that against the wages of those departments, it will impact us financially as we move forward. So we're watching that. I don't think it's over yet, but it is something that we are trying to anticipate as we work in through this. The ever-going cost of doing business goes up. It, it never goes down. We see that at the price, the price of gasoline. It fluctuates, it seems almost like every day. So we're watching that as we prepare this. Keep in mind, this is a best-guest estimate of what we think we're going to take in on revenue and what it's going to cost us. We do watch our numbers and we do study those expenditures and try to anticipate those as we go through that. But it, it's an ongoing thing when you start looking at all the different avenues and the $80 million that comes into the city annually. Anything can change overnight. So. And there's some mandates, unfortunately, that we are, I think that we are anticipating regulatory agencies outside our jurisdiction that we really don't have much control over that are requiring us to make some changes, possibly to our infrastructure. That's not in this at this point because we're still working on that and studying how that will impact our costs and possibly some capital improvement investments that we will have to make. At that point, that's almost a separate issue. And because it may require some financing to be involved, as well as capital improvements, investments, and things like that. So we really haven't gotten too much into that. My concern this evening was only to try to prepare you with a operating appropriations for 2025 as we know it today. As we took our end, month-ending November numbers and applied them to the numbers that were in the appropriations, projected those out as best we could through the end of the year. I wish I had a crystal ball, but I don't. And so it's kind of a best-guest estimate. I know that's probably not a proper thing for an accountant to say. My fellow accountants are probably cringing as I say that out loud. But anyways, it's the, the, a working document that we will continue to tweak as the information. We know that. Other than that, that's really what I have. This is on our website, under the transparency section of the finance. And I'm going to speak with the Mayor and his staff to see if we can get that on the city's website as well so that our public can, that we represent and work for can see it as well of how their city spends their money.
And Larry, it's safe to say, if someone was listening closely to your summary, that when you referenced that in 2024, the appropriations was around $84 million. And as we look to 2025, it would be around $80 million, and then $80 million and a half dollars. One of the big differences is one-time money is not going to be available in 2025. So in other words, ARPA money, American Rescue Plan money, those funds will be one-time dollars that have been spent. So it's not that we see- So it's not that we see revenues plummeting $4 million in a year's time, it is that we've spent some of those monies that were one-time money.
Does that have to be spent by year-end?
December 31st, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, to be committed.
Committed, okay.
And, and that's with this legislation this evening, we will commit some of that money. I think we have just a little more than that left in to fund, but we will commit that towards this project, which is a good benefit for at least half of the community, if not more. And it references one of those infrastructure projects that we were discussing. This is an estimate, the 80 million is an estimate taken off of November's numbers. So in doing that, the mayor is absolutely correct, there were some influx of additional funds that we received that we did not budget for initially. If you recall, about a year ago or two years ago, why we had to do some additional appropriations just in an effort to allocate for that money. So, but it will be tweaked as we go along.
Thank you for answering that front. Certainly caught my eye initially, so thank you.
Did mine too, yeah.
Does this need a state approval?
Per be.
Does this need approval by the state?
No.
In any manner? I know the budget does, but not?
That's a very good process, a very good question, Councilman Miller. The process is that along with the appropriations which you folks approved, that you are the final approve, approval of this from the city's standpoint, it also has to be submitted to the county budget commission, the county auditor and treasurer, and a representative of the prosecuting attorney's office. There is a coordinating document that runs alongside this called Certificate of Estimated Resources that we must operate within. We can't write red ink here and then expect the county to endorse it. So that's why it's important that it's a balanced budget, that's a state requirement from the state auditor's office and the Ohio Revised Code, as well as the Certificate of Estimated Resources, which is also a requirement that the city must comply with. So when you're, when we get to the final approval of this, I will have already adjusted the 2025 certificate in conjunction with the county to make sure that I have proven the case that we can appropriate this money and, and begin to use it.
Okay.
So for the last several years, we've talked extensively about the desire to have a budget in place by January 1st of the new year, and this may be the first year that that's probably ever happened.
As far as my knowledge, yeah.
Many times, council is approving the budget in late March. I think that's where we usually.
Late March is where you have to have it in place by the end of March. I think last year it was February.
Each year we've gotten a little bit closer.
That was close to my question. In the past, we've had to pass temporary apportionment, appropriations, excuse me, so the city had operating funds until balanced appro, I can't say it, appropriations were presented to us. By starting this early, are we gonna, is that still gonna be necessary for us to do that?
We did pass the temporary appropriations, but with, while we were doing that, I was trying to get this completed. If we pass this on the last business day, your business day, we will not need the temporary appropriations. This will be in place on January 1st, well, January 2nd of 2025.
And so an example of where that does make a big difference, when you think of our summer pavement program, and we often, some would say, go to bid fairly late in the season, in the construction season, and as a result, our streets aren't resurfaced until the very last minute, and they, there's a lot of, a lot of speculation that we get higher prices. We pay higher prices because most of the contractors already have their summer construction programs in place. They know what work they're going to be doing, so they're not looking necessarily for any extra jobs. Well, by doing this now in January, the engineer's office and all of you will know how much money we estimate to be available for pavement, and we can go to bid hopefully sooner. So chances are, we'll get more bidders and hopefully a better price, so.
Since your, since your clerk is in wanting to watch a game, I thought I might read the revised code for a couple minutes.
But I will say, big thank you, I will say, thank you to our finance director, thank you to our finance director for making it a priority. I know it might be partially motivated by that first pay period, but I appreciate their staff trying to get numbers down this soon because it will be a great thing to start the year, knowing people's budgets.
For all departments, they will be appreciative of having their budget in place and know what they have for the year. So thank you, Larry.
Yes.
So there will be a second hearing at the next meeting?
Yes, sir.
But for now, we'll open it up to the public. If anyone has any questions or comments regarding the appropriations hearing, more than welcome to address council at this time. And seeing that we have none, we will set the date for the next meeting, Terry accordingly, and see that on the agenda. And then we'll vote on it there. Second hearing? Yes. Very good.
So it's been set, December 17th.
We'll get you out of here. All right. With that, then, we'll close the hearing and move back to the agenda. We have an ordinance authorizing directing the mayor, director of public service to enter into a contract for professional services for the US 250 pedestrian facilities project, PID 121930 ASD dash US 250 dash 16.26 in the city of Ashland, Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
Move for non-reading in full?
Second.
Thank you.
Miller?
Aye.
Woodward?
Aye.
Lawson?
Aye.
Workman?
Aye.
Kyle?
Aye.
Speaking of those multi-purpose pedestrian pathways, this is one that we talked about early in 2024 when we received word that we would be getting a 1.8 million, approximately 1.8 million dollar grant to fund a new pedestrian sidewalk or multi-purpose paved pathway from Sugar Bush out on the US 250 corridor, all the way to Goasis out by 71. We've talked extensively over the last couple of years about the fact that now there are so many apartments and activities going on in that corridor that you continuously see people walking in the median or in, alongside on the berm there on US 250. And in fact, we've had some serious accidents out there as a result of that, but people trying to get to work, get to a medical appointment, or get to Walmart, or one of the other retailers out there. This grant comes to us through the Ohio Department of Transportation Systemic Safety Program, and like I said, our award is just under 1.8 million dollars. And tonight, we're asking you to take this first step, and that is hiring someone, entering into a contract to design the pathway. Now, for those that are watching and interested in the subject, on the south side of US 250, starting at Sugar Bush all the way out to Goasis, it would be an 11-foot wide paved pedestrian pathway, but it could accommodate not only pedestrians but bicyclists, as well as those on their motor scooter. And it would, you'd be able to travel now from the existing sidewalks that are in place to Sugar Bush, all the way out to 71, to Goasis. On the north side, it would include a six-foot pedestrian pathway, and of course, it would travel the same length as well. And then the other addition that is very significant is this would also cover the cost of pedestrian crossings at each one of those traffic signals. So that means there would be a button to push, and there would be the proper signal, modern signalization to guide pedestrians safely across US 250. So this really is an outstanding project, and it's a comprehensive project. I will point out that the grant covers 90% of the cost of the project, but we will get the other portion, our portion, the local portion, covered by the grant that our state representative, Melanie Miller, was able to get us up. So when it's all said and done, we should get the entire project covered by state dollars.
It'll be a big benefit for those in a wheelchair also. You see them struggling, trying to?
Yes.
Get down to those stores and so.
Definitely. Those, just to clarify, the mayor said motor scooters, not to mean motorcycles.
Yes, yes, exactly. And I'm thinking of those folks that ride those small scooters and struggle.
Sometimes they're on the side of the road because they can't.
Yes, yes.
I think it's, it's good to, to acknowledge too, that making your city pedestrian-friendly is a trend, and it's a trend for growth, as well as quality of life. And this council, this administration, from what I understand, supports a pedestrian-friendly community, and this is a huge, I guess, progress toward that end. And, yeah, hopefully we'll see more in the future, so. All right.
Has there been any conversation about the speed limit being changed because it is 50 miles an hour?
And that is because it is a state route.
Yes, absolutely.
And so there's always conversations, but I don't expect it to happen anytime soon, no. And there was a similar situation out on US 60, Center Street, coming into town, and this was prior to all of us being here, but the city did actually, even though they could not get permission to, change the speed limit, and ODOT came through and changed it all back. So I would say that it'll probably stay the way it is for a while.
All right. Well, with that, then, if there is no further discussion, is there a motion to approve on the first reading?
So moved. Second.
Thank you.
Woodward?
Aye.
Lawson?
Aye.
Workman?
Aye.
Kyle?
Aye.
Aye.
Again, I'll move to suspend the rules for three separate readings, three separate days.
Second.
Thank you.
Lawson?
Aye.
Workman?
Aye.
Kyle?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Woodward?
Aye.
Motion to approve the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
Workman?
Aye.
Kyle?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Woodward?
Aye.
Lawson?
Aye.
Ordinance 81 dash 24.
And finally, we have an ordinance authorizing the director of finance to transfer funds from one fund to another with annual appropriations and declaring an emergency. However, this will need to be read in its entirety due to the late arrival of this ordinance on the agenda. And to begin, whereas an ordinance authorizing the director of finance to transfer funds from one fund to another with the annual appropriations declaring an emergency, and whereas the attached exhibit of transfers requires being transferred from one fund to another, and whereas this council desires to authorize the said transfer of funds, be it ordained by the council of the city of Ashland, Ohio, its members thereto concurring, section one, that the following attached transfer of funds from the calendar year 2024 for the city of Ashland to offset operating costs be and the same as hereby affirmed and directed to be made. With the attached exhibit, section two, to meet the immediate financial needs of the city of Ashland, Ohio, this ordinance is declared to be an emergency measure immediately necessary for preserving the public peace, property, health, and welfare of said city of Ashland, Ohio. And section three, this ordinance shall take effect and be enforced from and after its passage by council and approval pursuant to section 12 of the charter of the city of Ashland, Ohio. So ends the reading. And with that, we'll turn it over to you there.
First of all, I did such a good job on the appropriations, I failed to get this to your clerk fast enough to get it done, and I apologize to you for that. The purpose in this is, is a couple items, excuse me. The first is the ladder truck fund. When we, if you recall, we borrowed a million 360,000 to purchase new ladder truck. When we received that money, we created a separate fund to hold that until we could pay for that truck. We have been paying on it, and this is interest income that remains in the fund. Now, by asking you to do this, we are now transferring that interest earning or income to the debt retirement fund to now pay for the truck or help pay for the truck. And that's why the first item is that way. The second item is the capital improvements fund, 405. Throughout the year, that earns interest income on the city's investments. Unfortunately, this one got by me a little bit, and it was overcommitted on expenditures such as some of our cleaning, cleanups of the, the gas station was a perfect example of that up on Claremine. So in an effort to resolve that, we are transferring 25,000 from the general fund to 405, the capital improvements fund, that will continue to receive interest income in December, that will also go into that fund in an effort to meet those obligations. Currently, there's about $44,000 that is laying in that fund that has to be paid for. It has purchase orders against that for the continued cleanup and some other minor projects that the city was doing. And by transferring this money and the interest income, we will be able to complete those, those payments in 2024. So I, again, I do apologize for the lateness of this, but it is an effort to try to meet those obligations and pay a little more on that ladder truck.
Sure. Very good. Comments, questions? Hearing that, is there a motion to approve on the first reading?
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you.
Lawson?
Aye.
Workman?
Aye.
Kyle?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Woodward?
Aye.
Again, I'll move to suspend the rules for three separate readings, three separate days.
Second.
Thank you.
Workman?
Aye.
Kyle?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Woodward?
Aye.
Lawson?
Aye.
Motion to approve the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
Kyle?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Woodward?
Aye.
Lawson?
Aye.
Workman?
Aye.
Ordinance 82 dash 24.
Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. And with that, we'll move to resolutions. There are none this evening. We have our, had, had our public hearing items, no old business or new business unless council has something to bring forward. With that, we'll move right to finance director's report, Larry.
I really have no report at this point. I still have that revised code, if you want me to read it. No, I have no report, thank you very much.
Thank you. And we'll go right to council comments, Dr. Lawson?
Everything is going so well right now, I don't have anything to comment about, and no, no one has contacted me about anything, so we're in good shape.
I know, we live in a wonderful community, because I live here, but it is nice when somebody else that does not live here tells me. So I had some family visit from Toledo, and they went down to our downtown to go home, and she calls me and says, "I cannot believe how beautiful your downtown is." So I just thought that I would share, share that information with you, that, you know, we, we know what we have here, but it's nice when others notice it as well. So thank you for all your hard work to make that beautiful down there.
And all the folks that are investing in it.
Yes, yes.
I appreciate that, though, very much, Councilwoman Woodward. What I will tell you is, I've been sharing with some of the staff around the office, we are getting more and more messages from folks we, I don't know, from other parts of the state, saying just that, that they are just so impressed, they don't know who I am, they don't know who we are, but they say, "It's just incredible what your downtown looks like." So I do think the world is noticing, and incidentally, I think I've shared with some of you, the city, the Chamber of Commerce, and the Ashland County Community Foundation invested, at least for this year, in gathering the data that can be traced through our cellphones. In other words, it doesn't mean we're spying on everyone, but basically, you can go to certain companies, and they can give you data and statistics about the movement of your people, who's moving where, how much time they're spending there, and the numbers are staggering, the increase in the number of folks from outside of our community and region who are coming to Ashland. are not going up by just a percentage point. They're going up by thousands of people year over year. Here's an interesting statistic. In 2022, our Christmas parade had 9,000 folks standing on Main Street watching. In 2023, one year later, last year, over 15,000. And so I have to believe that we may have a few more friendly visitors this year as well. So I think more and more folks are seeing that this is, in fact, a great place to be. So I appreciate the sentiment.
Well, I hate to be Debbie Downer, but.
As long as they drive slow, they're fine. They can come.
That's right.
How did you know I was gonna say that?
Slow down.
With the increased traffic, it just seems like there's a lot more accidents, particularly in intersections and side roads and everywhere. So please watch your speed. You know, it's a beautiful city, as we've talked about, but we want to be around everybody, have everybody alive to enjoy it. So just keep your speed down.
Mr. Kyle?
The city looks beautiful, man.
Hey, thank you.
And I think I'll just leave it at that.
Thank you.
Well, okay. The Eagle Gas Station.
Yes.
You'd never know it was there. It really looks good.
It does look good, yes.
And the cars parking there look like they grew there.
Yes, yes. That's great.
A long time coming, but it does look good.
It does.
Yeah. And whoever we have to thank for this Christmas tree in our council chambers, thank you. Amanda or Terry or Mayor Miller, thank you.
We do have to thank, let me tell you, I came up this, and I didn't, I was gonna thank her myself. I came up this afternoon and I said, "Terry," I said, "We've gotta have a Christmas tree in that council chamber." And so we went looking through the closets, and evidently, she found the one that I thought was there. And thank you for putting it up. I had no idea she'd have it up by the time the council meeting came along. That's right. Just, just in all fairness, those of you who know Terry, Terry keeps a decorated tree in her office for every season. And it is meticulously decorated. And it is full of ornaments and full of ribbons and bows and flowers. And so I can only guess what this is gonna look like by the time the next council meeting rolls around, so.
All right, no pressure.
That's right.
The last thing I want to say, and I'm sure the mayor will touch on this, is the candy cane trail was an outstanding event. If you missed it, I'm sorry you weren't there, because it was.
Just in case you mentioned that.
Tremendous, yes. And I'll, I'll turn it over to you, Mayor.
I've been carrying this with me most of the week, and I just want to.
Is it true you've been sleeping with this under your pillow?
That's right, that's right. This is not our formal certificate. This is actually the certificate that they prepared that night. We will get the former certificate, which will actually put the exact number, what record we broke, and so on. But for now, this will do as a prop. Let me just point out to anyone watching, maybe Amanda will zoom in back there. Down here, it actually says, what does it say?
Officially amazing.
That's right. The city of Ashland is officially amazing. And interesting enough, I did not realize it until the adjudicator told us that night. She said that we are the first city ever to break a record. They will have credit for breaking the record. Now, we know the real credit belongs to the Poor Balls and our friends at Grandpa's Cheese Barn, because they are the ones who underwrote this entire project. We had definitely had some others that joined in. McBee Paving and so on helped out the Park District to lay down the new trail. So there are lots of others to thank, the Park District as well. But the truth is, the Poor Balls really carried the weight on this project, and it is a labor of love. Their intention is to spread joy all throughout this community and to any visitors that happen to show up during the holiday season. So we really have them to thank, and their name probably should be on this, but you know what? We'll go ahead and take it. City of Ashland, Ohio will be in the Guinness World Book. And interesting enough, at the ceremony or at the announcement, I asked her the question, "Will we be in the Guinness Book of World Records?" And if you noticed, she kind of danced around that. And she said, she said, "Well, you get us a lot of pictures and information, and you never know." And the reason that is, which I did not realize, not everything goes in the book. So they pick out ones that would have a lot of interest, you know, and so on. And so Amanda Patterson-Furman in our office has got her all of these great photos and videos and everything else, hoping that maybe we will one day make the book. It'll all determine by their editors and their staff if it's one that's worthy, that people would be interested in actually seeing in the book. But we will be listed on their website as the recipient of this award. So it truly was a marvelous evening, there is no doubt. And the fact, I think, the thing that probably impressed me the most and just means the most is that that was a frigid night. It was painfully cold. I will admit, I could barely move my mouth, nor could I walk when I left there, because my feet were hurting so bad. And my fingers, I had pretty much given up on them hours before. But what I will tell you is, we had at least 1,000 people out there. We gave out over 750 candy canes, and when you looked out of the audience, most people didn't have one. So the fact that we had that many of our friends and neighbors here in Ashland show up for that Christmas season kickoff, that is a wonderful thing. So the spirit is live and well here in our community. So thank you for the prayers. And on another note, let me just say, and I do this because I don't want anyone to ever say that they were blindsided. Throughout 2024, I have repeatedly at this meeting pointed out that we would soon have to raise our sanitation fee. I believe last year, we raised our water fee. It had not been done in 13 years, or was it two years ago? And let's face it, we all know with inflation, costs have gone through the roof. And we know we have to raise these rates from time to time. But the sanitation rate is the one that we've talked about during 2024. And the reason, because the landfill, Rumkey's fee that they charge us to dispose of everyone's waste here in the city keeps increasing. And I just want you to know that as we start 2025, it is inevitable that our sanitation fee will have to increase. And part of the reason why is we just got notice that they're planning to increase it again. And that is the 4% increase on top of the other 4% increases. And I think, don't, I know we've got media here, and they would want to make sure we confirm this, but I believe if you take a look over the last several years, their fee has increased by more than 32%. So as you might imagine, we've got to, at this point, increase our. I probably am the one that has stopped it from being increased, because I haven't brought it to you. And the reason is because knowing everyone's dealing with inflation, I didn't want to be, the city to be someone else that raised another bill that was coming every month that people had to cover. But you can't continue to postpone it. So next year, you will, should expect to see an increase, and it'll be a couple of dollars, I have no doubt. And don't, not necessarily $2, but it will be, it is gonna be, it'll be noticeable on people's monthly utility bill. So not necessarily good news, but it is where we're at.
And a reminder that assistance is available for seniors who need it.
For the water.
For the water, yes.
And then finally, a lot of the leaves are just now falling. And so there are neighborhoods that are getting discouraged because they don't, they have big piles of leaves in their front lawn, and no one's coming to get them. We will be through to get them, but right now, there's a whole lot of things going on in the city. And the staff is out every day getting leaves, but don't give up. We'll be in your neighborhood soon. Normally, by now, we're done putting the equipment away. And if you, if it were daylight and you looked outside the council chamber right now, all the trees along Broad Street still have their leaves, brown leaves hanging on. So we may be picking up leaves all throughout the winter. So, but that's all I have. And again, I just want to remind people, even though you might have thought last Sunday was the official kickoff to Christmas in beautiful downtown Ashland, it wasn't. It's this Saturday. So this Saturday at 6:00 PM is our annual Christmas parade, followed by our downtown Christmas tree lighting at probably about 7:00 o'clock, as soon as the parade concludes. And then once again, we'll light up the skies over City Hall with our fabulous downtown fireworks display. So if you missed the world record-setting event, you can come out and be a part of one of the largest crowds that we will probably ever see in our downtown.
Very good. Thank you, Mayor. And with that, we'll move right to comments and questions from our audience. If anyone is here who would like to address counsel, now is your opportunity. Mr. McNaul, welcome.
Thank you. Wading through numbers and appropriations and things is not the most exciting thing. You'd rather be talking about, I'm sure, new development and new expansion. But I just want to point out that that underpins everything else that you do. You get good quality information that allows better decision-making. We've got number crunchers on the council. And you use those numbers for long-range planning. You use those numbers for state grants. It's just part of the things that flies below the radar, but it's an important part of the, what makes the city work.
Definitely. Thank you. Thank you for acknowledging that, Tom, truly. Anyone else? All right. Seeing none, then, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Your second?
Second.
Thank you.
Aye.
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 All right, we are adjourned. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you.